Good evening. On behalf of the town of Deerfield, I call this special town meeting to order. I've examined the voter sign-in and determined that we do have a quorum of over 35. I have also examined the return and find it in good order. A brief overview of the rules. If you wish to speak tonight, if you could stand, there are portable microphones, is that correct? That will be brought to you. Thank you. Way to be addressed, if you could state your name and the street you're living on, would be appreciated. If there's any attempts to make motions to amend, those should be in writing. Anyone who is a voter should be located on the field and non-voters would be seated in the bleachers, is my understanding. Everyone should have received a town meeting packet when they first came in, so we'll be referring to that throughout the night. It's a good resource, so please keep that handy. In terms of the way we'll handle things tonight, a proponent will make the motion, it will be seconded, there'll be a brief explanation, and then we'll proceed to discussion on that. And with that, I'd like to introduce the head table, and if we could start from my right and go across. Jay, if you could just introduce yourself.
Jay Tallerman, Town Council.
Brenda Hill, Town Accountant.
Trevor McDaniel, Select Board.
Dave Wolfram, Select Board.
Carolyn S., Select Board.
John Pachorek, Chief of Police for Deerfield.
Zachary Smith, South County EMS.
Chris Curtis, Consultant to the Planning Board.
Thank you. I have two initial motions. I initially moved that the reading of all articles be waived and that prior to a reading of a motion under the article, the moderator briefly summarized the content of the article to be considered, and further that unless objection is raised, the reading of detailed motions be waived where the article as printed can, in the opinion of the moderator, be incorporated by reference into any motion presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Essentially, this is just a procedural motion which attempts to speed things up a bit and it lets us rely on the handouts which show the full articles. Any discussion? All those in favor? I note one opposition, the motion carries by majority. I move that the following people be allowed to address the audience during town meeting. Attorney Jay Tillerman, Brenda Hill, Town Accountant, Casey Warren, Town Administrator, Judith Rathbone, an attorney McLaughlin, and Attorney Don Dubendorf. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Essentially, this motion allows us to have non-voters be able to participate in the meeting. Typically, those individuals would have relevant information to matters that you're going to hear about this evening, so all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article one, Ms. Shores Ness.
I move that the town authorize the select board to apply for, accept, and expend for specific purposes any monies provided by any federal or state grants or programs which may be awarded to the town.
There a second?
Second.
Ms. Shores Ness?
This is a housekeeping article confirming authorization of the select board to apply for, receive, and expend grants as they become available. We forgot to include this during our regular annual town meeting earlier this June.
It's my understanding the Finance Committee is in support of this. Any discussion or questions? Yes?
What about private grants? Wouldn't that be included also?
Ms. Shores Ness, is that?
Um, I guess so, yes. It would be any grant money. It does say "or" programs.
I don't see personally any limitation on the language that's before the citizens. I don't see it excluded, so is there a motion to amend or are you comfortable with that? Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article two, Mr. Wolfram.
I move that the selectmen be authorized to submit a House rule petition to the General Court requesting an enactment of Special Act of the State Legislature to exempt Mr. Robert Warger, Mr. Joseph Michkowski, and Mr. Raymond Bernisky, three Deerfield police officers from mandatory retirement age of 65, and extend their ability to serve in the capacity of the police as police officers for an additional five years.
Mr. Wolfram, any comments on that?
Yeah, these are actually three officers that I've worked with in the past when I was on the Police Department in town, very capable officers. And, you know, by letting them to extend, these are officers that were covering their wages, but they don't have any additional benefits for insurance and things like that. So it's actually somewhat of a cost savings for the town of Deerfield to keep them on board.
The Finance Committee supports it? Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. If you could just state your name and your street address, wait for Mike.
Lili Dwight, South Mill River Road. I was just wondering if the police chief would address this at all, if he has anything to say.
Chief, would you like to comment briefly?
I think David summed it up very well. All three are amazing police officers. Bobby Warger's been with us since 1980, Joe Michkowski's been with us since 1990, and Ray Bernisky is 76, I believe he was appointed a police officer in Deerfield. And all three are amazing. They serve the residents extremely well. However, if you are ever a full-time police officer and you retired, you ultimately have to stop policing at 65 years old unless the state does an age waiver on you. So this authorizes the select board to petition the state to do a five-year age waiver.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Why would John Waite question us?
It's not working, John.
Oh, oh, that's working. John Waite, 15 Keats Road. I'm just curious, not about the three individual police officers, but how did we get the policy to begin with about 65? And have we done this? Is this a regular thing we do? So I just want a little more clarification about why we're doing it this year.
It's my understanding it's state law, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, you're correct.
And we have done it in the past.
But asking for the waiver, that's what I'm wondering. How often does that happen?
Happens quite frequently. With communities, they do it for fire, they do it for police, they do it for EMS. Anybody that's in the retirement system that they want them as part of a group four retirement to serve past 65 years old, whether it be in a full-time or part-time capacity.
I guess my only question is about, don't we want younger people to also come into the police force? And how does that balance, how does that work?
Yeah, balances very well. Deerfield unfortunately is known as a state and federal training ground. We have seven police officers in my approaching nine years as chief of police that are now state troopers. We have federal air marshals, FBI agents, DEA agents, and now Secret Service. When they come to Deerfield, they're like, John, who can you give me? So our younger populace is always cycling and it's extremely important that we keep that older generation around that knows the residents inside and out and can tell you the heritage of the community in every backdoor action for the past 30 to 40 years. They are such a wealth of information that to ask them to retire from me is just wrong.
That sounds fantastic. I just do want to highlight the fact that we are looking for diversity, I think, in our town as well as all towns. So I just wanted to make sure that fits into this and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor? The motion carries. Article three, Mr. McDaniel.
I move that the town act on Article Three for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, with each item considered as a separate appropriation as presented in this handout.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to?
I would, yeah. I'll go through each of these and one at a time so we can have discussion and get through them. Go ahead.
So just for a point of order, so there are several, what would typically be several motions. We're trying to consolidate here into one larger motion to try to expedite the process. So, Mr. McDaniel, initially this will be one motion, but we're going to take some time and go through each one. If there's something that warrants being pulled out because there's going to be significant discussion, we can remove that and deal with it separately, but give it a shot. So, Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you. So, A would be to transfer for FY '21 capital expenditures to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of money for capital projects for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, or take action relative thereto. That the town transferred, this is really broken into two articles, two capital projects that we put off in the spring because we just weren't sure where the town was at with all that was starting around COVID. And now that we've had free cash certified, we know kind of the position we're in. We feel, and capital and finance have all looked at this and we think we should move forward with the transfer of $35,000 from free cash to fund the police mobile data terminals for the cruisers and to transfer $32,500 from free cash to fund the Ford F-150 pickup truck for the Highway Department.
It's my understanding the Finance Committee recommended this as well? Is there any questions or comments on that? Okay.
Okay, so moving on to B, this was to transfer money to the general stabilization and we're going to table this. We just felt that at this point that we would not be moving money into general stabilization since that fund right now has about $1,006,000 in it for a rainy day fund and we think that's sufficient right now. $1,006, yeah.
If it's been tabled, we can move to C?
Yep, okay. C is, and we do feel this is appropriate, to transfer to capital stabilization the sum of $250,000 from free cash to be put into our capital stabilization account, which right now has about low over maybe $640,000, $600,000 in it right now. And each year when we have a chance, we have extra money at the end of the year, kind of called free cash. We feel it's important to put money aside because we know we have a lot of capital projects coming up and it's important to fund this stabilization account to be able to pull from instead of raising taxes for the capital projects.
Finance Committee, do you wish to be heard on this or? Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
D is to transfer for the Deerfield 350th Celebration Fund. So each year over the last several years and leading up to 2023, we wanted to take $10,000 from free cash and put it into a fund to have money on hand for the 350th Celebration. And we felt, we didn't want, we pulled this off the spring annual town meeting just again to wait to see where we were financially and we think it's appropriate to do that. So we don't all have to come up with the money in 2023.
It's the second time.
Yes, this is the second transfer.
My understanding the Finance Committee supported that as well? Portion E?
Portion E is to transfer for FY '20 legal expenses, that the town transfer $25,000 from free cash to legal expenses for unforeseen costs. I can speak to that a bit, is that, you know, we have a lot of, the town has been very busy lately. We have a lot going on with collective bargaining and with businesses coming to town that are requiring a lot more legal services for our respective boards, planning boards, EBA. So a lot of business going on and, you know, again, we may not spend all this. Whatever's left would roll back to free cash at the end of the year.
Supported by the Finance Committee? And F?
F is a revision to the classification plan. So each year we have a classification schedule, compensation schedule, and we bring that before the town. And what we wanted to do is, one item that was approved at annual town meeting was a part-time administrative assistant for the Highway Department to do billing and such. And we just didn't get that on the compensation plan in spring, even though it was voted. So that was just a correction there. The other part of this is that we're changing a bit of the structure at the Highway Department. What we would like to do is, we did have somebody who served the town for a very long time as a foreman and has retired. We are looking to change that position from a grade three to a grade five and act more as an assistant superintendent because we run our town not really as a highway department, it's really a public works. They have sewer, wastewater, roads, you know, transfer station, all kinds of things that they're overseeing. And it's just requiring a lot more help. So we think restructuring that position shouldn't really have much of an impact on the budget because the foreman was allowed overtime. This position will be an exempt position and not qualify for overtime. So we think it's somewhat neutral on the budget. A smarter way to run the department.
Mr. McDaniel, was this the motion that involved an error in the warrant?
Uh...
I thought you had caught a typo.
I don't recall.
Okay, we're fine then.
Thank you, though.
Yep, thank you. And the Finance Committee recommend?
Oh, fiscal year, yes. Yes, that's right. Yep, scripter's error.
So we'll just have a friendly motion to amend for fiscal. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Committee? Thank you. I believe we're on to G.
G is to transfer, this is the transfer of SCAM's rental income to the SCAM Stabilization Fund. And this is a fund that we set up through the annual town meeting in the spring. And this is money that three towns together pay for rent for the South County EMS building. And what we had decided in the spring and voted on here was to take 75% of that money and put it into a stabilization account for future maintenance and anything we need to do with that building down the road, since all three towns are paying into it. But we did take 25% of that and goes into the general fund for our regular maintenance, mowing the lawns, plowing the snow, that kind of thing, the small maintenance. But this would be larger expenses that we'd normally come to the town and ask for, you know, capital funds for. This would set money aside into the capital stabilization. So this is just taking over the last two years, the $54,000 out of the $72,000 Deerfield got for rent and just funding that account, starting the funding of the account.
Finance Committee? Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, Mr. St. Peter?
Yes, concerning that, it's written down as a SCAM's rent stabilization fund. I really think that's kind of a misnomer on it. I think the previous town meeting had that as a stabilization fund and not a rent stabilization fund.
You could be right about that, I think, Bruce. I'd have to look back at the language of how we set that up last time. I think this is mainly just to kind of let people know what it was for, but, yep.
Any other comments or questions on that particular item or any of the items that are contained within this consent?
Mr. Moderator, I would second the entire reading.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article four, Ms. Shores Ness.
I move that the town appropriate $1 million for the purpose of construction of recreational fields, foot, and bicycle paths with parking, including all engineering and design work in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 45, Section 14, or any other enabling authority. And to meet said appropriation, transfer funds from the Community Preservation Act fund of $1 million with $153,516 from the budgeted reserve fund and $846,484 from the undesignated fund balance and further authorize the select board, General Laws, Chapter 44, to file on behalf of the town of Deerfield any and all applications deemed necessary under the PARC grant or any other applications for funds in any way connected with the scope of this construction and authorize the select board to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as they may be necessary to affect said construction and acceptance of grants. The foregoing being done in conjunction with the acquisition of the town pursuant to Article 16 of the June 1st, 2020 annual town meeting of the property located at the Town of Deerfield Assessor's Records, map 151, Lot 1, including eight and a half plus or minus acres, and then owned by Joyce H. Preveer by the deed recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, Book 2635, Page 326, said purchase having been made for general recreation purposes to be under the care, custody, and control of the select board and by an appropriation of $272,000 together with the appropriation of $1,150,000 pursuant to Article 13(c) of the June 1st, 2020 annual town meeting for the development of recreational fields, foot, and bicycle paths with parking and a ban shell with seating for open-air events.
Ms. Shores Ness, I don't know if you'd like to try to summarize or?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, this article is intended to be for funding only. It's a proposed development for the development of the North Main Street property, Assessor's Map 151, Lot 1, for recreational purposes. After the town meeting in June, the select board was notified of an opportunity for funding through the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities, the PARK grant program, for up to $400,000. To qualify, however, we had to have funding under the grant program and the town must satisfy certain requirements with specific language and obtain full appropriation for the project. Originally, this project was estimated to be $1,150,000. However, after acquisition and preliminary evaluation of land in June, the estimates increased. So again, this is a funding article only that's being presented tonight after applying to the program. We applied to the program after the June town meeting and we are clarifying what the original vote is required for us to do. And then these requirements also include the creation of the area for recreational purposes under the Section 14 of the Chapter 41 Mass. General Laws. It's a requirement to have a full funding for the estimated development and construction costs and authorization for us, the select board, to apply and expend those grant forms before we can move forward with the grant. And this is a reimbursement grant, so the entire budget must be funded upfront. The public information process for this whole development of the project will start November 18th, 2020, at our selectmen's office, I mean, at our selectmen's meeting. There will be several meetings to develop the conceptual plans and we hope people will come out to participate because I think it's... come out to participate because I think it's, this is one of those things that, um, especially with what's happening this year, we really need a place that we can come together as a community and meet and have events. And I, I feel like this is, um, I think we all had sticker shock here. This doesn't mean that this is, we're going to expend all the money, but we have to appropriate the money to be eligible for funding and, um, and we want this to happen. We need to have this happen. So I'm going to turn it over to John at this point.
Is this recommended by the finance committee?
It is.
And has anyone here from capital improvement planning? Recommended?
Yes.
Uh, recreation committee, is anyone present? It's my understanding it was recommended by them as well unanimously. And the community preservation committee, Mr. Hillchi? Okay, any comments? And it sounds like, uh, Mr. Pachorek, you'd have a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think most know me, John Pachorek from 141 Whately Road. Take off my professional hat for a minute. Most know, uh, the select board and I have been working on additional park and recreational projects with the rec committee for near two years now. And annual town meeting, we were fortunate enough to have support from the residents to push this project forward at 1.15 million. A couple of things re-triggered the vote tonight, and I do want to emphasize them from Carolyn. Number one, the grant folks down in Boston said the language needs to be more specific. So the language was clarified for tonight where we need to revote it. The second part that came up was when we engaged a professional engineering firm versus John Pachorek Jr. as chief of police, the true cost came forward. So, the additional funding, um, is on here. I would ask that you support it. After annual town meeting, for those of you that were there, July 2nd, we purchased the property and we engaged a professional engineering firm. We filed with the conservation commission on August 13th with a RDA, or request for determinate applicability. We did a site visit with conservation August 25th and we actually met with the conservation commission in person on the 27th where they delineated the wet lines on the parcel that the town purchased. The conservation commission voted unanimously with the wetland delineation. We did file the grant by July 15th deadline with Boston. It is a 1 to $400,000 grant. It is a competitive grant. There are no guarantees that we are going to get the grant. The governor's office right now is, uh, is holding back grants slightly. Uh, we should see some type of award on that in the next two to three weeks. Their deadline is November 15th for the awards. I was fortunate enough to run into the head of school at Eagle Brook and Andy Chase is a staunch supporter of the town of Deerfield as well as his wife, Rachel Blaine. They're amazing. Uh, Andy committed that Eagle Brook would pay for and build a pavilion at the town park on behalf of Eagle Brook School. The modified budget request went in front of the finance committee as noted, uh, by the moderator and the select board, CIPC, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the select board and the Community Preservation Committee. All of these committees have recommended this project move forward with full funding. Uses for the park, I know people look at the renderings right now. You look at the conceptual drawings and you're like soccer only, but that's not the purpose. That is not the only purpose of this park. We don't have a town park. We have not had a town park since we built the elementary school. And I'm a true believer in community. So, the town park is going to be there for public gatherings and celebrations. It is going to be tied into an educational environment with climate resiliency with programs through Frontier Regional High School. There are possibilities of having summer recreational concerts there, athletic events with a focus on soccer. However, the fields are multipurpose. They are not turf fields, so they are not pre-marked. On top of that, Sue Antonellis, the recreation director in town, I know Sue's here tonight. Sue constantly struggles with inaccurate, inaccurate storage levels for her equipment. She has nowhere to store stuff. We really want to build a small building over there with restrooms, with maybe a small concession stand, but give her a two-car garage bay where she actually has adequate storage that's not mice-infested. Recreational and athletic walking path around the exterior, if you actually can look at the map, around the outside of it is a handicap accessible paved walkway. And Sue actually, from the rec department, again, recommended that we look at different athletic stations along that paved pathway. So, all the way from children to our senior citizens can walk out there. It will be accessible to wheelchair and full handicap accessibility. Public information, as Carolyn noted, input session starts November 18th. And the current balance before we purchased this property out of the Community Preservation Act was 3.474 million, just shy of about 3.5 million dollars in the Community Preservation Fund. And we did purchase the property out of that fund. Annually, in the recent years, we've seen 400-plus thousand and before that we were seeing about 300,000 a year deposited into that account. So the total appropriation for that account, to be clear, is the total project costs right now are at 2.15 million. I know there's been concerns online, the, the project's $3 million. That is inaccurate. The total cost is 2.15. We allocated 1.15 at annual town meeting. We're asking for the additional 1 million to move the project forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments? If we could wait one moment, sir, the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I would, uh, I'm in favor of this. I think it's long overdue, but I want to make sure that there's a sidewalk built from Frontier Regional School up to the north end of this property that we're going to improve and a crosswalk to go ask over to North Main Street because you're going to have kids crossing all over and there should be at least one crosswalk and there should be sidewalks so that they can get up on both sides of the road and we don't have kids getting hit. Uh, I can remember going to a fatality up there 45 years ago and it was pretty traumatic when somebody was walking on the side of the road with no sidewalk.
I, I think those points are important. I do note that there's going to be informational sessions and input sessions starting in November. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that tonight's issue is really on funding for the conceptual concept, but those are important issues to be mindful of. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Just your name and your street address if you could. We're all trying to get to know each other.
Gran York Ward Avenue. And I think in this, um, environment we're in now, we have plenty of playing fields. Uh, recreation is necessary, but when do the senior citizens get a new senior center or an improvement to this one? A million dollars is what Whately paid to improve their town hall. And I would just like to see improvements made to our building, which is the old grammar school, rather than see it continue in disrepair.
Thank you. Ah, just peek over there. Sorry, the mic's not catching you.
Ben.
Yes.
There you go.
Ben Clark, 303 Upper Road.
Thank you.
Okay. I am in favor of this project. Um, I think, uh, you know, we did approve it already. We have the money in the, in the CPA funds. Um, it is an open space somewhat, but it is really recreation. It's, it's saving this property and it will be enjoyed by families and, and all in the town and it is accessible. So I think it's something that we should go forward with.
Thank you. Uh, yes. Is your mic live right on, uh, speaking?
Hi, John Porezki, Pecum Tech, Pecum Tech Drive. Um, I'm speaking as a taxpayer, as a member of the finance committee. I'm concerned that the, I just want everybody to be clear that 843,000 of this money, yeah, it's sitting in CPA funds, but it can be used to help build a better senior center. I think, um, I think we should be ashamed at what the seniors have to go to for senior center. And I think we should spend, be spending this money to improve the senior center. I also have a question on the grant. If we receive the grant, that's if, will that be used in addition to the 1 million we're appropriating tonight? Because the language is silent on that. Um, if it is going to be put back into the CPA funds, how will it be allocated? How much will go to the undesignedated amount or portion? And how much will go to recreation?
Uh, I would think that would be best addressed by the select board.
Okay, go ahead. So, uh, yes, the, the, the grant would, um, be used for the project. If, if we get the money, it would be voted back to CPA. So any, any leftover money from the project will go back to CPA. Um, you can't, uh, you can use the CPA money, uh, for senior housing, uh, but not, I don't believe for a senior center.
No.
So, um, there is a lot of limitations on what we can use for this, um, for this money. I have another comment, but I'll, I'll wait until it's my turn. I just want to answer that.
Thank you.
Dan?
Can I get back on that?
Uh, just, yeah, we'll continue that conversation with just one more. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the money can be used for, um, historical buildings, which the senior center is, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, that, well, that building is, I guess I should say.
Dan, you got the chair of the CPC looking to speak?
Oh, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, yeah, you're fine, Ms. Shores Ness?
Yeah.
Mr. Hillchi, go ahead.
Tim Hillchi?
Mike's not working, Tim.
Okay, Tim Hillchi, I'm the chair of the CPC.
Don't that work any?
Tim Hillchi, Chair, I'm the chair of the CPC committee. Um, to clarify, there are four areas which CPA money can be used for. It can be used for recreation, open space, historic preservation and affordable housing or affordable senior housing. Um, the, the member from the finance committee, I think, is correct that some, funds could be used to store, to restore the exterior of the building that currently houses the senior center because it is considered to be an historic building. But we could not expend funds to actually build a senior center or, or anything like that. So we could fix the exterior of the building if a proposal was brought forward, which I think would be a, a good use of the funds. But we couldn't build a senior center with it. So just a clarification.
Thank you. I think that's important. Uh, Ms. Shores Ness?
Thank you, Dan. I just want to say that, um, I have been, um, 100% for, looking forward to supporting senior housing for a good two decades. We've been working on it. And, um, we actually, when we went to Boston this past year, we, um, in January, we actually had volunteered Deerfield to be a pilot and I thought we were having a, um, opportunity to have senior housing in town and I was very excited. But, um, unfortunately, when COVID hit, uh, it just dried up. Nobody was pursuing it. And I understand on the state level, they were hesitant to invest money. So, um, I, I would defer to Lili Dwight, who is my chair, uh, of the committee, housing committee, but one of the problems is we don't have a housing authority and we have to have a partner, a private partner. So I have really been so conscientious about trying to hoard the CPA money because we're, we're going to have to have three or four million dollars. But since this deal fell through, uh, it's like a two-year process at least. So I feel like money is, and with the new governors, the governor has, um, made it possible that the match is again a, near 100%. So, um, the money will come back into the CPA. We still have the substantial money there for senior housing. And our intention is to pursue senior hus- housing, absolutely. And, and if Dan would recognize Lili, she could have just explained a little bit more, maybe.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Ms. Dwight?
Hi, Lili Dwight, South Mill River Road. Um, two things. I serve on the Community Preservation Committee and I 1,000% endorse this project. And I, it, like Carolyn, I'm deeply disappointed that we do not have senior housing. The challenge that the CPC faces, and this is addressed to those who want to make renovations to the senior center, is we can't act. What we can only do is react to projects that are brought to us. So, um, if you, and I would love to meet with you and get to work on it too, want to put together a proposal specifically addressed to the restoration of the historical building, it clearly needs to be phrased appropriately, then that's, that would be awesome. Um, but again, uh, the senior housing, I'm the former chair of the senior housing committee and we made amazing progress and, um, handed it off to RDI and it sort of disappeared. But the main problem is that we do not have a housing authority in our town or anything that operates that way so that we can manage the senior housing. So that's part of the process that we're trying to go through too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, yes.
Comment?
Are, are we commenting the senior center or on the park? Because I, I think we've understood there's an allocation of resources here and it will impact that. But beyond that, I, I'm not inclined to go much further with that, so.
Okay, I was just going to comment on...
Go ahead.
The overall. Very quickly on, uh, buildings, the park, uh, I support. The buildings in town, uh, once again, we, we paid to have, uh, a study done on all our town buildings and the results have not come back yet to the best of, uh, my knowledge. Uh, that's being headed up. And the items on those buildings need to be determined of what can be done and what can't be done and at what cost. So before we start talking about spending money here and spending money there, once again, I think we need that study back so we can assess it as a town and also assess how we're going to spend this money wisely instead of just spending it here and there. And once again, I will go back, this town needs a long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the park? Mr. St. Peters?
Uh, yes, I, uh, just wanted, uh, bring forth the fact that we do not have much for recreation in this town. The little park down by the base of the mountain is owned by the state. A lot of the athletics are being bused to Hurley Field in, in Whately, which of course is owned by the town of Whately. Uh, the Frontier Grounds, of course, are owned by the Frontier Regional School Committee. The only place that we, town does own is the Deerfield Elementary School grounds and that's also very little space. We do have an opportunity here and unfortunately we passed over too many over the years. We have a great opportunity here. It's, it's not going to affect the tax base because this is being done with CPA funds. Uh, and I highly recommend it to be supported in full.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Rathbone or?
Hi.
If we can just wait for a mic, please.
Hi, Amanda Butler, North Main Street. We've spoken about this project a lot of times in the past. I know you have mentioned that as well. It's always been referred to as a park. This is not a park. This is an athletic field. And, you know, the second part of that is you're asking us to essentially pass the bill before we see what's in it. You want us to give you the money, but you're not even going to have a meeting to discuss the safety issue that that gentleman brought up with the crosswalks. We're just supposed to trust that this money is going to be used to create a space that's safe, that's accessible for everyone, that serves the purpose of a town park, which is what everybody wanted. We have other places we can place athletic fields.
We don't.
That are already more appropriate than what we're using here. I don't think we should be voting on this until we have a town-wide meeting to discuss what the money is going to be used for.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Judith Rathbone, 131 North Main Street. I've been residing there since my dad died April 13th. I appreciated so much the support I got for not taking my dad's land by eminent domain. And unfortunately, six months after his death, I'm back to speak on this issue. My residence will change to South Deerfield within the month and I will be a registered voter here. But I'm speaking as a guest and I appreciate the opportunity that as an abutter to this property that I can give you my feedback. I'm not just speaking for myself. I went and I spoke with about 30 people just in the last two days. I can tell you that everybody upon hearing the details, which they had not heard, they had not heard, no one had heard. This was done... This was done August 31st, and no one had seen it or heard anything about it of all the people I spoke with. There were some people who got a private email from John Pachorek. I had to hire an attorney to get access to this, and we got it two days ago. Two days ago, John Pachorek began making it available to people. So, in terms of process and governance, there's something going on that just doesn't sit right with me and didn't sit right with the people that I was talking to. If you're asking for a million dollars and potentially more, seems everybody should be able to wrap their hands around what it is you're going to spend the money on, whether it's the money that is in community preservation or it's the money that the town is going to have to put up, and especially with no guarantee of getting foundation money. I absolutely support the idea of long-term planning. I moved here when I was 17. I lived here when I was 17, 18, and 19. I'm back. I have to say, the approach in my mind has been helter-skelter. I oppose funding this at all. We have been trying to work behind the scenes to try to find a way so that we could somehow move forward with being sure that the community and the neighbors would be heard. Do you, if you can imagine having a small spit of land between you and your neighbor, and someone comes along and says, "Oh, we need to go through that, we're going to build a road, and then in the back, we're going to put 88 parking spaces and 12 buses, and by the way, we're going to put public toilets, of which there are none in the town of South Deerfield, we're going to put public toilets on my property line." Everyone I described this scenario to said, "Oh, well, I wouldn't want that to happen to me." Well, it could, it could, because if it can happen to me, it could happen to anyone who has an empty lot next to them. Maybe they're coming for you next. Not opposed to soccer fields, I've said that over and over. I'm not opposed. I'm six months in after my dad died. I'm not quite ready to join the community of planning for the beautiful future of beautiful South Deerfield. I can't tell you how I feel to even be standing here tonight to have to address these issues. But if you vote for a million dollars, if you vote to fund this, then you're voting for the principle that you should be able to just put public toilets on somebody, anybody's property line. And when those public toilets go bad, I'm going to have to deal with it because it's going to be in the covert between my property and theirs. It's not just that. 88 parking spaces, it is an enormous number. Please do not vote a million dollars to fund 88 parking spaces. It's going to be hundreds and hundreds of people. And that street, you know, the children who play on that street, oh my God, they are so, they have to be so careful because the traffic is so fast, because there's so much traffic from Pelican. So many people coming on shift, so many people leaving after the shift, so many people who don't live in South Deerfield and who drive really, really fast. It is a dangerous area to begin with. This is going to quadruple that. So, I'm just, I, I, I'll be a voter next time, but all I can say is, as in a butter, I'm against it. I hate to come out and, and take that position, but we haven't been able to find any other way to compromise. There has not been a community process other than saying, "Hey, we're going to do this. If you have any feedback, get in touch." That's not the way you do community development. You go and you get people involved. And those 30 people I talked with between yesterday and today, it's not easy. You got to knock on the door. You got to get people to give you some time. You got to talk in a way that they're willing to listen, and you got to show that you're completely open-minded.
Ms. Rathbone, I...
I'm done.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and we appreciate your comments. Then you would raise your hand and wait for a microphone. Ms. Antonellis?
I'm Sue Antonellis from 592 Greenfield Road. I am the Recreation Director. I've been the Recreation Director for 21 years now here. We have looked for land for 21 years in this town. Most of the land that is an open space is protected by, you know, for the farm. And we are unable to build anything pretty much anywhere in this town. We had that land off of Brayburn Road, which is inaccessible. And we do need fields, some kind of fields. I know these are soccer fields, but we do need soccer fields. I have one soccer field now. Last year, I had 12 teams. I had over 150 kids in the soccer program. And we, Deerfield Academy does help us out by giving us a field, but I need a lot more than that. I also, you know, I think the handicap track, accessible track around is a very good idea. I've had lots of requests for areas for people to walk or run or something like that in town. And I desperately need a building, I can tell you that. And I think the pavilion that Eagle Brook has graciously said they would build would be a wonderful addition. It's someplace we could, you know, you know, rent out even, or, you know, go there for picnics and have little parties there and stuff. It's just something we really need in this town. We have nothing, we have nowhere. There's no parking at, over at Memorial Field. You know, we're right by the police station, and there's, you know, we get in their way, you know, we just, we just do. There's lots of cars there. On a weekend, you know, between the grandparents and the parents coming, you know, there's sometimes, you know, almost 100 people there at a time. So, we do need a gathering place. We need someplace for the kids to go, for the adults to go, and, and this is a great opportunity. We have the money, you know, the money CPA is supposed to be used for recreation. And this would be a great opportunity to go forward.
Thank you. Officer, was there a question on the track?
I have one more comment.
I'd like to amend the motion.
I think it's premature. I'm going to let it go out a little more. Officer McDaniel?
So, I just, I wanted the opportunity, obviously, I'm in favor of the project for, for all the reasons that we've talked about. We really need a, a place to gather and bring our community together. There will be informational sessions, and we'll work together to make sure the place is, is safe. And we can take all the concerns we're hearing and work that into the plan. The plan you see is a conceptual plan. We have to go through and work with the engineers and listen to the residents and, and find the best way to use the land that we have to find a place to, for our children to play outside. You know, especially in this environment, and I don't see it changing for a while, you know, to have our kids outside playing soccer or any other sports, not only a soccer field, it's good for our families, it's good for our children, and we'll make sure that it's safe. If I could, I would just like to read a statement to the record. Ken Cutterback could not be here tonight. He is from 36 State Road. You all know him. He serves on the Capital Planning Committee and on the Deerfield Elementary School. "I am writing to express my support for Article 4 on the special town meeting warrant October 22nd, 2020. I am a 49-year-old resident, a 49-year resident in the town of Deerfield and have served in elected positions on the planning board and school committee over the past 35 years. In addition, I chaired the Deerfield Elementary School Building Committee and have served on subcommittees for the town in various capacities. I'm writing this statement since I will be unable to attend tonight's meeting. My support for the project is, as outlined in Article 4, is based on what I feel is a need for the town of Deerfield to have recreational area and space that all citizens can enjoy. Presently, there are limited public recreational spaces in the town, and our recreational programs have limited options for field space without the support of local businesses. The funding proposal in Article 4 will help construct playing fields to address this vital need as well as provide a space on which townwide events may be held. I have read the letter of concerns expressed by council for an abutter who speaks for the residential character of the neighborhood being threatened by the proposed improvements in the parcel in question. I've heard these same concerns in the past when Frontier proposed lighting their athletic fields, which we enjoy now. The land in question is actually zoned for commercial and industrial use, and it butts the Pelican Industrial Plant. Further, while North Main Street, well, North Sugarloaf Street does indeed have a residential face these days, there are many long-term residents who may remember the Chevrolet dealership that was located on this stretch of road.
Mr. McDaniel, are we, are we wrapping up, or?
Yep, wrapping up. "The April Town Meeting approved the purchase of the property and estimated cost for improvement. This vote seeks additional monies for costs beyond initial requests, costs that have been identified as the project proceeds through the design phase. I believe the project will proceed through the reviews with the Planning Board and Conservation Committee prior to the start of construction, and that the town will work to address concerns as they are presented." Thank you.
At this point, there's been a motion to call the question. So, for those of you that aren't familiar, there can be no further debate. There'd be a two-thirds vote required. That would stop any further debate. If we don't want to call the question, you would vote against the, the motion.
Can I, can we amend the motion?
There's been a motion, there's been a motion to call the motion. So, at this point, I believe we have to proceed on that.
Because we never addressed the funding by the, Mr. Moderator? We never addressed the handling of the grants.
Yes, I did.
What do you mean by that, sir?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to amend the motion to say any grant money received...
If we can just pause for a second, I just want to talk to council. Again, it gets into a little procedure, so I know it's late, but I just want to explain again. There was a motion to call the vote. So, I am required at that point to entertain no further discussion, no motions to amend. I'm forced to act on that. And if two-thirds of you support the motion to call the question, there'll be no further debate, and we'll move to a vote on the actual issue. So, if you're feeling that there's more people that wanted to talk, or if there may be a motion to amend, or there's other items, then you would need to vote against the motion to call the question. So, at this point, I'm taking a vote on the motion that's been made to call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That requires a two-thirds vote, and that has been satisfied. So, at this point, we'll, we'll call the, the motion. So, all those in favor of Article 4 as presented? Those opposed? The motion carries. Article 5, Mr. Wolfram?
I move that the town accept as a townway the altered layout of Marigan Way as laid out by the Select Board, as shown on the plans of land titled Town of Deerfield Signed A&R Plan, provided by Heritage Surveys, dated August 21st, 2020, filed with the town clerk, reviewed and approved by the planning board, and referenced in this article.
Seconded.
Brief explanation, Mr. Wolfram?
What happened was when Pilot Position moved in, the right-of-way did not go far enough in front of their property. So, this is just kind of to clear that up, so they have a full right-of-way now. The drawing also from previous, from the Oxford property wasn't outlined with the Blacksmith Brook, which is now in that drawing. And the right-of-way.
The Finance Committee supports this? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 7?
Article 6.
Article 6, I apologize.
John, wait, oh, John's up here, good.
Yep. Mr. Waite?
Thanks, we don't want to get to the marijuana yet. Article 6, I move that the town replace Chapter 179, Section 4300, floodplain district of the Deerfield zoning bylaws with the following as presented in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Waite, could you explain the motion briefly?
So, as the Chair of the Planning Board, we've been talking about this for a while. We have, in our current bylaws, we have a floodplain district bylaw, but it's very short, and it doesn't cover a lot of the things that it's supposed to. One of the major, major things that the update will do is that right now FEMA requires that towns must have a floodplain bylaws that meet our minimum standards in order to continue to qualify for floodplain, for federal flood insurance. And this subsidized federal assistance makes flood insurance affordable for Deerfield residents. So, the existing floodplain zoning is outdated. The other thing that Deerfield does have a floodplain zoning bylaw, but the bylaw is actual standards or regulations for the, but the bylaw has no actual standards or regulations for the floodplain. It only protects the regulatory floodway. So, this bylaw change does not change the boundaries of the existing floodplain district. They just continue to be the same based on the FEMA floodplain maps. We've had several public hearings on this at the Planning Board, and Chris Curtis, who's also a resident of Deerfield, has a lot of expertise in this, and I'd like to ask him to say a few things.
It's very important to protect our floodplains because they serve a key function in the town, basically protecting our village centers from the impacts of floods. As we saw with Hurricane Irene, this was a really important function. Hurricane Irene did $23 million worth of damage in Franklin County alone. That was costs to the towns for damage to roads and buildings and infrastructure. So, our floodplains help to reduce those damages and really have a positive economic impact on, on the town, and protecting them is very important. This bylaw is also part of the town's climate resiliency program, and the town's gotten over a million dollars in grants from the state to do things like replace culverts in town, upgrade some of our infrastructure with green infrastructure. And this is one other component of, of that program. We've had several town, townwide forums about this, and flooding has always been the most important issue that's been identified as a concern in Deerfield when we start talking about the impacts of climate change. So, it's, it's very important that we, we focus on, on flooding and that impact, and it's only going to get greater as, as time goes on. Most of the area that is in the floodplain is along the Deerfield River, and most of it is farmland. A lot of it's under APR or permanent protection already. Much of it up in the old Deerfield section of town. So, again, it's important to update these standards to try to meet federal requirements and, and to keep us in the National Flood Insurance Program, which subsidizes the cost of insurance for, for many residents in town. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's my understanding the Finance Committee does not recommend this, is that correct?
That is correct, and if I could take a moment to explain our recommendation. We did not see this article until the night of the Finance, of the Finance Committee meeting, which was a week ago, Wednesday. And we really, you know, in reading through it, we weren't exactly sure what was intended. So, I guess it would be nice if the Planning Board had done the job a little bit earlier and maybe come to the Finance Committee meeting and tell us about it. But they didn't, so it was difficult for us to vote it. And we ended up saying no. 3-2-1 was the vote. You know, maybe if we'd had a better explanation, we would have supported it.
Thank you. Yes?
I would like to move to amend Section 4309, uses by special permit, Section, subsection B1, where it says, "Single-family residence," and it, and it should, should, to also include a two-family unit. Some properties, you can build a two-family if you have the right number of frontage. But with this, if you're in the floodplain at all, you can only build a single-family residence.
Is there a second on that motion to amend? Dan?
Yep.
Where's the second? Would the Planning Board like to comment on that? Town Council would like to speak with the Planning Board, so it'll be just a moment.
Yeah, it appears, and Bob, maybe you can help us with this, it appears that it's not going to really change things, it's just that because two families are allowed, we just put it with that. And it does require a special permit, so it's, still has to come through the zoning board or the Planning Board, so.
It says single-family residence, which would mean you couldn't grant the permit. Okay? You follow me, John?
Sounds good.
Is the Planning Board comfortable with the amendment?
Yeah, so that's a friendly amendment, so 4309, uses by special permit, B, one, single-family residence and two-family residences. Okay.
All those in favor of the motion to amend to include two-family unit, two-family residences? All those opposed? Motion carries. Back to the underlying article or motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on the main article?
I have a couple of questions, please.
Yes.
Yeah. I was just wondering if they could explain 4310, the Planning Board shall be the special permit granting authority for the floodplain district. How does that play out? You know, we have a Planning Board, we have a zoning board of appeals. What's the procedure for that? Just so I understand it a little bit better. Does this basically mean that the Planning Board is the sole authority on this?
Mr. Waite?
Yeah, so in all of the bylaws, it either, if it says the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority, then it would be the Planning Board. If it doesn't say anything, then it's the zoning board of appeals. And issues like this, we also do the stormwater reviews, we do the site plan reviews, so it makes sense that the Planning Board would just continue and also look at these kind of issues.
Does that, does that change our process that we have right now with the Planning Board and the zoning board of appeals?
No. Only for this issue.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a special permit process. So, we're adding a special permit process, so we're adding us the Planning Board as the permitting authority.
Okay, next, next question I have is, they talk about 25% footprint.
Where are you, Mr. Upton?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find that right now.
Can I make a comment?
As far as additions and that, same?
It's B, B three?
Yeah. 4309 is one area where it shows up. It shows up in several areas here. But enlargement or alteration of an existing structure provided by the addition is no more than 25% larger than the footprint. My question is, for all businesses and homeowners, does that mean anything existing now, they cannot go 25% larger than what they have, even, even with the permitting process? The reason why I'm asking that is if you have a young couple that buy a thousand-square-foot house, and then down the road have two, three kids, they want to put an addition on their house, are they allowed to go only 25% larger? When you're talking a thousand-square-foot house, 25% larger is not that big for three or four kids.
Can I respond?
So, that.
Yes.
So, it's important to note that this section of the bylaw only affects the existing structures that are in the floodplain right now, and there are very, very few homes that are actually in the floodplain right now that would be affected by this. It doesn't affect homes or new homes that would be outside of the floodplain, and it doesn't impact someone who would be doing new construction.
Right. But it does impact the, the homes or businesses that are in the floodplain now?
That's correct.
So, so you're limiting some homeowners, so that could have an impact on their evaluation down the road? As far as land value? Property values? I'm just wondering if we're, I'm a little concerned about this, and I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of imagination. I'm, I'm trying to interpret this language that, as Skip pointed out, we've only seen for all of maybe about two weeks here, but it just seems that there's a few areas of concern that I think the whole town should have, that I just think need to be vetted a little bit more. I guess I'm a little concerned of, and I understand, you know, meeting federal requirements and state requirements, but I'm just wondering if the town itself is doing a little overreaching here, going a little too far with this. And I'm not criticizing anybody, a lot of people have done some great work, obviously, here, but I'm just, I'm kind of questioning, and I would hate to see something like this passed without really everybody, including myself, completely understanding what this language means and how it could impact the homeowners and businesses, whether they're existing now or down the road in the future, as far as people wanting to come in or businesses wanting to come in. That's my concern.
Thank you.
So, if I can address that?
I, I'm going to let things play out for a little bit with, with Citizens. So, anyone have any comments or questions in the field? Yes, ma'am. You could stand and state your name and your street address.
Jennifer Rupp, 26 Conway Street. We lived in Northampton floodplain before we came here, and we couldn't build anything. We couldn't build an existing structure, expand current structure, so 25%.
You're cutting out, I'm sorry.
5% regulation is not going to. Also, if you're buying something in a flood, to purchase flood insurance, and you know that when you purchase a property.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Come back to the table. Yes, I'm sorry, the lights are. Mr. Hilti?
Tim Hilti, 330 Greenfield Road. A couple of comments first. It's important to know that the Municipal Volunarily Preparedness Group was talking about this floodplain bylaw for at least six months, and I'm surprised that the Finance Committee wasn't aware of that. Also, the Finance Committee voted three, two, one, so 50% of the board was either in favor or abstained, and 50% expressed an objection. Now, the purpose of the floodplain bylaw seems clear. If you don't have one, and you can't get federal insurance, you can't build anything there because no, no bank is going to lend to somebody who can't get federal floodplain insurance. So, I think it's a very logical thing to do, and it will help the people who are already in the floodplain to continue to be able to insure their homes and businesses.
Thank you. Over on the track?
Kip Camosa, 304 Greenfield Road. Couple of things. First, I'd like some clarity from Mr. Curtis. Are you saying that no one can currently buy flood insurance?
I don't want to get a back-and-forth going, so if you have a couple of other comments, then I'll give it back to Mr. Curtis, so.
Okay. I don't believe that's accurate. You can buy flood insurance, and there's a lot of, as they say, the devil's in the details with this. I've spent a lot of time reviewing this, not just now, over the past year. And one of the things, or several things, that bother me, which you don't realize, is that we do not have current floodplain maps. We are working off of old ones. The previous Planning Board had asked several times about updated plans. Those are coming from the USDA, I believe. We don't know where the floodplain maps are going to lead us to. One of the things is Bloody Brook behind us could be in those plain maps. As this thing reads, if we wanted to add an addition onto the high school, it's very conceivable with this four-foot elevation change, we'd have to raise the entire school four feet because of where the maps are. Now, is that practical? No. Would that happen? It's possible. Now, you'd go down toward Old Deerfield, that whole section of Route 5, same thing. Anybody wanted to do anything, not only they would have to make their new building, the old building would have to be the same. Septic systems would have to be replaced. And it needs a lot more work. This is not a good bylaw. I understand the intent, and the intent is good, but there's a lot of big problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, would you like to speak briefly? Or Mr. Waite?
Yeah, if I could just.
If you could address Mr. Camosa's question as part of it, too.
I'll leave that aside, but I just wanted to.
And if, Mr. Curtis, if you could, is flood insurance available in Deerfield, or?
Yes, the point we were making is flood insurance is currently available in Deerfield, but the town needs to update their floodplain bylaw in order to continue to have that flood insurance to be available.
Mr. Waite?
I want to get back to the Finance Committee earlier, and I, and I apologize for not getting this to the Finance Committee, if in fact they, they needed to see it. We were not aware that there was any, that the Finance Committee needed to see this. As someone else in the public mentioned, we've had many public hearings on this, it's been around for many months, so it's lots of opportunity for folks to, to look at it. That, just want to get back to that 25% footprint, that's 25% footprint. If you want to put a second floor on it, that's not an issue. So, you could expand, put your two kids' bedrooms up there. But I just want to say, this is about safety and about environmental and, and about insurance and those kind of things. So, it's really, it's, it's, that's, that's the main thing. And will it make it difficult for, you know, somebody to expand their building? Possibly, but it's, it's probably not a good idea to expand it in a floodplain. So, that's the, that's the reason why we want to pass this.
Thank you. Mr. Alstead, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, just a quick one. John, my, my point really was that we were not even appraised, the Finance Committee was not even appraised that this was going to be on tonight's warrant until a week and a half ago. And the, so that's, that was the issue, and I wasn't criticizing the Finance Committee for not, not coming to us. It was just that we didn't even know the article was there. I do have, I do have a question that I would like to add. Jeff indicated, asked the question, so if I've got, if he's got a thousand-square-foot building, could he add 250 square feet more to it? And I understand you can, but he couldn't add 300 square feet to it. I understand the discussion about adding up. But if I buy the piece of property next to Jeff's, that's a vacant piece of property, the same situation that Jeff has his house on, can I build a 1,500-square-foot house? And if I can, why can't Jeff put an addition onto his to make his 1,500 square feet?
Is there any other?
No, no response, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion as presented? All those opposed? If you can just keep your, just oppose, keep your hands up, it's a two-thirds vote. The motion carries by two-thirds. It's too dark to see the next article? Article Seven. That's from the Planning Board as well.
So, thank you. Before I read the motion, I just want to bring everybody's attention to the handouts that we have. So, you have, in your, in the main document is the proposed bylaw, but then last night we had another public hearing, and there were eight fairly minor changes made to it. And so, in the extra handout with a lot of yellow and blue is several of the, the changes that were made over the past couple of months through the public hearing process. And then in my motion, I'm going to read the eight minor things that were, the changes that were made last night, and those are indicated in blue on the additional handout about the marijuana bylaw.
Is there a motion?
Motion, I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 179 of the Town Code, Sections 4650 and 4660, entitled Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers and Marijuana Establishments, respectively. By deleting these existing sections in their entirety and by adding a new section, 4660, entitled Marijuana Establishments, as printed in the town meeting warrant, but subject to the following amendments, which follow the Planning Board's public hearing on the new section. So, these are the eight small things that we did last night. One, by deleting from Section 4662 the definition of cease-to-operate in its entirety. Two, by also deleting from Section 4662 in the definition of marijuana establishment, the phrase "accept a medical marijuana treatment center." Three, by adding a new paragraph to the end of Section 4663 stating, "No marijuana establishment that has applied for and/or received a special permit or building permit prior to the effective date of this bylaw shall be, shall be subject to the requirement hereunder that is more stringent or restrictive than that in effect on the date of such special permit or building permit application." Four, by deleting from Section 4665G, the term "building," singular, and replacing it with the term "buildings," plural. Five, by adding to Section 4666A3, after the phrase "marijuana establishment use," the phrase "accept for a marijuana retailer or marijuana independent testing laboratory." And by adding a new sentence at the, at the end of Section 4666A3 stating, "The Planning Board may waive the foregoing requirement when the public interest so requires." Six, by deleting Section 4666A4 in its entirety, and by renumbering Section 4666A5 as Section 4666A4. Seven, by deleting from Section 4666B3, the term "8:00 PM" twice, and in each instance, replacing it with the term "10:00 PM." And the eighth one, by deleting from Section 4666D42, the phrase "medical marijuana business" and replacing it with the phrase "marijuana establishment."
Is there a second? Second? Mr. Waite, Town Council has noted that the amendment also impacts Section 2320 and the zoning maps. So, there's two additional references. The motion had only referenced edits to 4660, so I'm wondering if you would be interested in including those in your motion?
Yes. And, so this one.
2320 is the table, and then the zoning map.
All right. And Section 20, 2230, use regulation schedule shall be amended as follows, and there's a use table.
All of that was included in the article, so I feel it's within the scope, so.
One more, and the town shall amend the zoning map by deleting the current marijuana overlay district boundaries, and in place thereof, adopt the following map changes. And we have a Marijuana Operations One, Marijuana. And we have Marijuana Operations 1, Marijuana Operations 2, Marijuana Operations 3. So there's three sections in town where it will be allowed.
All those in favor of the motion to amend? Opposed? The motion carries. So back to the underlying article. Is there any discussion or questions? Finance Committee, did you have a position on this?
No. We took the article up eight days ago, and we passed the article. Unfortunately, the Planning Board has since changed the article, so we have no recommendation.
Any comments? Yes.
I just want to make it understood to everybody here, one of the changes that I consider as a major change is they eliminated any buffer to any residents anywhere. So at this point in time, what it amounts to is you can have a marijuana retailer right next to a home anywhere along the strip. Part of the preface at the beginning of the article is to protect the citizens of the town as well as to limit access to minors. Now, when the schools get out or Tilton Library or anything, the first place they head is toward the center of town. This article eliminated the, this 11th-hour change that was made last night, eliminated any kind of buffer to protect any of that. So I would just like to, I'm not going to amend it. That's up to, I just want to make sure people understand that this is what they did, and the other side is, you're going to hear that, well, the town only allows two marijuana retailers in town. That's true, but, you know, are they going to be next to each other? There is no limit on the number of testing without any buffer, so you can put them anywhere in town as well. The other types of marijuana establishments are restricted with the buffer zone. So that's all I just want to make sure is people understand that.
Thank you. Response, Mr. Wade?
I just want to, also, I should have said this, is that, again, the Planning Board has been dealing with this for over a year and had lots of public hearings. And the Select Board also has been involved in having some of their own meetings on this, and we've gotten together over the past couple of months and merged this together. And part of it is to, this new overlay district actually allows the testing and a potential retailer in town, in downtown, where there's empty storefronts. And there's also, the point that came up last night is why we changed it, is that downtown there's residents all nearby, and there's people who live in apartments up above, so if we kept that restriction, that means basically that our map wouldn't really matter because you couldn't, no one could actually locate there. So that's why we had to take away that distance part.
Any other comments? Yes, in the back?
Kathy Melnick, Mill Village Road. My only question would be on the manufacturing. Do they are limited to what they grow on the premises, or are they going to be bringing things in and out? And how do we control where their product goes?
It's all controlled by the CCC and the state.
Everything is tracked.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Melnick?
It's only going to be used, manufactured, that's grown on the premises.
That's correct.
That's the intent.
The intent. But what happens if it isn't?
It's their business model. You know, I'm not speaking on behalf of the facility, so I, they wanted the ability to process the plants on the property in the existing building with all the security that was there. I don't believe the idea is to truck in stuff to make, to process. It would be to process what they grow there. I mean, they have many other facilities to do that in.
Okay.
Lili Dwight, South Mill River Road. I have a question on the table of use. And as amended, I'm looking at the amended one. Am I reading this correctly, that the only use by right is for an independent testing laboratory in MO1, MO2, and MO3, and everything else is special permit? Is that correct reading?
Exactly. Yes.
So there's a lovely little comment on the side. Oh, I guess that means about violation in the overlay district because nothing is allowed by right, except that it is now. Okay, thank you.
And the testing facilities, we felt like that's the smallest, least, most people, you wouldn't even know it's there, so. The biggest, I just would say, the biggest change from the current one is that the current one that we did about three or four years ago, when this was really new to everybody in the state, is we allowed cultivation all over the RA district, and most of Deerfield is RA. And as we've learned since then, that most marijuana is not grown out in fields by farmers, but it's grown in warehouses. And so we don't want more warehouses out in RA district. So that's, we've really restricted considerably where marijuana cultivation can go in town.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries by two-thirds. And that is the extent of the business before the town this evening, so I would... Those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you for coming. Don't you usually give the...